One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto item three, citizens' comments. So with that, we'll move on to discussion items. The first is city council compensation. Is that, I don't know, you can hand up, so I can.
According, okay, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're discussing the city council compensation. The city last, the council last discussed this in 2018. At that time, that's when the current ordinance was adopted and set the current compensation for mayor and council members. At that time, the proposed ordinance also incorporated a biannual cost of living adjustment, but the city council ultimately removed that. Prior to 2018, compensation for mayor and city council was last reviewed and adjusted in 1999. We want to bring this forward to see if we should have more regular discussions on it. I've also provided a couple charts that show our comparable market cities and where their compensation lies. So the first one is council member and the second one in your packet is for mayor. We are right about in the middle, if not slightly below the average. If the city council is considering any sort of changes to the compensation ordinance, the salaries must be established and amending ordinance 994. It can take effect as soon as January 1, 2025. So staff seeks direction on where the council would like to go with this.
Thanks for the background information. You know, from just a personnel standpoint, we thought this is something that regardless of whether it changes or not, that we should bring up for conversation. So appreciate it on the background. I mean, I'll offer some initial thought. For what I see particularly our mayor do, did it in basis that do you think that? I would feel comfortable with compensating the mayor role. Way of it more, but also know that that's not necessarily a good move for the general public and the use of their funds to do a large increase like that. I mean, I, just based on what I know, I think that we can, former mayors have done for him. But I think fifteen thousand is fairly low for the work that goes into that role.
Especially city the size.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, the comparisons aren't nice, but I was just trying to think of just the number of meetings that I know mayor does on a basis and I'd be comfortable with twenty-five, honestly. But that feels like a significant jump in a year. So maybe that's the work towards, but I thought maybe a more reasonable amount would be an increase to eighteen in this next cycle. For council, another two thousand increase so that it's twelve, twelve and eighteen.
Can I just ask a question before we get to, before you finish?
Good.
When you gave us the information as far as the past, where they started and then where they ended up, my thought was in 2018, moving here, the only one that's here, well, Justin too. In 2018, did they have a discussion about the fact that they could only go up so much? Because they really didn't increase it much over ninety-nine. And so I didn't know if there was supposed to be, maybe the whole inflation thing was supposed to be the way to make those steps, like you were talking about, you know, the jump to twenty-five. So I didn't know if there was any planning that went into that they thought about making steps to get to a different level.
I think, and maybe you remember, I think one of the big conversations that they shifted away from that was the per meeting instead. That, you know, different people in council mayor would attend different committee meetings instead of having like later, like you were on a lot of committees and you'd be.
That is, you turn it in, I don't, I don't turn it in.
The, the bigger conversation at the time was more coverage and we decided to not go back. So expensive. Or I don't even think it was providing, but I can't remember what the, something along the lines. Anyway, that was so expensive that I think the compromise really was say, okay, we'll just bump up council and mayor and then avoid the automatic kind of coverage thing.
Well, I just didn't know if you wanted to get rid of the per meeting thing, if you were just, if you, if your suggestion is to bump it like that.
Yeah, the other thing I remember from that conversation in 2018 was that the per meeting, at least at that time, was brought up as a way to keep council members accountable for the meetings that they were going to. But I don't know if that concern exists at this moment in time. That people are going to the meetings that they're assigned to. I fill it out for that reason, pretty judicious about sending that form. But it's more, so just, I don't know, I started doing it early.
Never been in the habit.
Yeah.
My loss, but I just.
Yeah, if somebody, for accountability, they can make a beta request, I can't see the time that's spending. I agree, I think, I think a two-year review regardless of what happens. I just, it kind of baffles me that there was a two-year review and then all of a sudden it turned into eighteen or nineteen-year review and then six-year review. So I'd like to just see that consistency, so I think that's the first point is doing that. You know, we're the average, we're a little bit below the average in both parts. My concern is balancing, I just feel really, I gotta tell you, I feel really awkward talking about raise, but I do want to balance that we don't wake up one day and all of a sudden it's so disparate that now we have to do this huge deal. So I wonder if we are going to, to make an increase if we do that over, over a couple of years and spend two years getting to where we think that would be a good. I don't think we're that far off right now, quite honestly.
My guess, there was that most of these numbers are where they're at because this is an awkward conversation to have and councils don't.
Bloomington doesn't seem to have any issue.
Whether or not you can do it planned.
I think probably.
Right, I think, I think you'd have to take a vote each time.
And I'm not in favor of the, I think the proposal before was every two years you just do the cola, I'm not in favor of that. But yeah, if we, if we could accomplish that, I think, I think it would be good to to make an adjustment upward simply because I just don't want to come back two years from now and now that gap's bigger and bigger and bigger.
I have to believe that you can just because of history, because the amendments in ninety-eight and ninety-six were two different amounts in the council for two years. So in ninety-eight, we approved it for two thousand. Mayor Salas eight fifty-eight and then in two thousand and one, it was eight seventy-nine.
But I think you had to take a vote to do that each time.
Each year.
So when I look at the mayor's salary, I think it's in line with peer cities. So I don't think I'd actually be in favor of increasing it. I think the one area to, to look at would be our kind of like conference budgets, I don't remember where that number is. There's a lot of value in thinking and we, I don't, I can't think of a time accounts person has been to a conference outside of the state. And I think there's value in learning from other places, so. But I guess this year I probably will go to the least, maybe it will be.
And I'll say, I frankly was surprised we had a salary when I started last year. So I, I don't see anything out of line and I would not support an increase either.
And then, I mean, my only question would be too is if we're going to review it every two years, how is that documented? Is that just documented in minutes?
We could put it as policies and procedures that you every year at the tree.
Yeah.
Just say this is, put a clock on it.
Or in the other.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, but you in our policies say every other year.
Doesn't sound like it's strong for the two, any changes this year. But we got the conversation, it's about reviewing.
That sounds like.
I was gonna say, do you want it to always, that review to happen in the even number of years?
Oh, that makes sense.
It does, or you want it to odd?
No, because it would go in effect after an election, right?
I just know sometimes it's sensitive to talk about it in a much, so I'm saying if you bring it up in an even, in an odd year, it still takes place after that next election, but it's not as quick.
It's just that you don't have as accurate information on the surrounding cities at that point. Then you're going on all data.
There's a two-year.
Yeah, then there's a two-year lag, so. Is it that contentious to really up a salary if you can? You have a basis for it, I don't think so. I think, I think when you say we're at the bottom of the, we're not. But if we ended up at the bottom for the size city that we are type of thing, then, you know, you have a rationale as to why you're increasing it and also documenting how many hours are put in to, to serve the community, so.
I do think the city council is a very, so if we renew one, I think, position of you want to go that direction, there's not more support for that, that's fine too. Maybe if I'm just looking at our peer cities.
Honestly, when I looked at it, I thought about how many hours you put in versus what we put in. And so I, you know, that's why it didn't bother, I, it, it didn't. Increasing yours seemed very rational. Not only the hours you put in, but your previous years I had before you, you all. Your role is just much different than ours as far as the things that you, the meetings that you have to attend. Now, if you want to do it differently and have something like some sort of per diem for the type of meetings, constituent meetings that you go to instead of just committee meetings, you know, instead of upping the salary, you probably will get to your salary that, the same suggestion that he gave because of the number of meetings you go to. So you might want to think about that. If you were to go back through your calendar over the last year and a half as being mayor, how many meetings you've taken? No, I know, but I'm saying personally.
It's only the meetings, they're only, the only reimbursement are the ones that you approve on that list.
Right.
So it's not like all those citizen meetings and everything like that, so it's just.
No, I, what I'm trying to say is if you were to take a different point of view, if he were to, if you were to look at the calendar of meetings that he's had that are outside of the committee and the numbers of them, and if he were to tackle a per diem on it, you're probably getting to almost Joshua's close.
Why, why is, Courtney, why is Egan ten thousand four dollars in the hill? Like a automatic thing?
You know what, I'm not exactly sure of that.
There's a couple on here that have like really weird numbers, Egan, Brooklyn Parks, there must be some sort of like percentage because.
Or they have an automatic.
Automatic flater. Yeah, because I guess, like that too, because then everybody else is like around a two, I guess.
Yeah.
Only other comment to this was, was to do a similar increase to what our staff received, three percent. Because again, this conversation that never gets easier, especially as you get further, further down the comparables. Because nobody wants to increase large amounts. Probably wouldn't want to see that, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was reasonable, three percent.
And, you know, I don't have a bone to pick in this, I just wanted to make sure you think of everything. If you don't do it now, then the next time would be twenty-seven and then you're pushing that nine-year difference again, which was the last time you did it, so.
I honestly thought you guys would think about doing something small now. I thought from where they started to where we are today was such, such, so small, I thought there must have been some sort of plan, you know, to.
I think it was based on the average at the time.
Yeah, it was, you just looked at, just you looked at the comps, that's on the average. I think there's not.
Three percent of ten thousand is what, ten thousand three hundred? Yeah.
I think, I don't think there's, there haven't, since here, so.
Okay.
All right.
So what we'll do is we'll bring it back over these years on kind of a regular basis, just for discussion and see where we're at compared with other cities. Okay, great, thank you.
No, thank you. Sure, it's annoying to look at the comparable cities, so. Uh, okay, we will now get an update on thirty-five fifty from our M G B here.
All right, I'm gonna do my best to summarize about sixteen to eighteen months of discussions and technical analysis. Twenty-minute update for you, so we'll see how that goes. I'm gonna talk about a couple of things today, but I did want to start out. So I wanted to start with just a background and then we'll try to go from there. So back in twenty twenty-one, we received one point four million dollars from the state and that was kind of the catalyst to take this project and started moving. And so we took about seven hundred thousand dollars up to that and that was granted to MinDOT and that was used to do a corridor study. The purpose of that is for us to make improvements to the interchange. We had to know what, what was MinDOT's vision for the entire quarter. Do we build, you know, is it going to be a two-lane bridge, a three-lane bridge? So that was kind of the first fourteen, sixteen months of this study. And then, so this was actually prepared by MinDOT, it was their study, they ran it. I'm gonna highlight a few things in there. But the study basically looked from Burnsville to Lakeville, from the split to County Road seventy. And they kind of broke it into five things following MinDOT's kind of procedure for this. An overview, purpose and need, public engagement, corridor concepts. And so there were two things for that. First was to understand the corridor needs and then the second was to use that information and give the city and county some direction as to how we can design the interchange at County Road fifty. There is a number of factors included in the scope, including public engagement and evaluation of existing conditions, forecasted traffic modeling and then an analysis of corridor concepts. We did not do any pre-environmental work that was not required as part of this funding grant. So MinDOT breaks it into three different areas, primary needs, vehicle safety, vehicle mobility. Secondary needs that aren't the catalyst for, but contribute to it are the bridge condition and the payment condition. I'll highlight that a little bit later. And then additional considerations being local access and they wanted to make sure that it didn't preclude our ability to expand the interchange. The long and short is they looked at the corridor and there was evidence that there was congestion and there were several areas along this stretch that exceeded the critical crash rate. The takeaway is a lot of the accidents were happening at the ramps and that's attributed mostly to short lengths. We don't have none of those long extended ramps to accelerate or decelerate and therefore about eighty percent of those cat crashes were rear ends and or run off the road. And so MinDOT used that more as a localized issue and not necessarily the freeway itself. But they did identify that there is congestion here and if nothing is done, there'll be, continue to be congestion that will contribute to issues along those ramps. A level of service, we've talked about this in the past, if we have an A, that means everybody's flowing continuously, F is congestion, so A being good, F being bad. And you'll see here a number of intersections, northbound in the morning, southbound in the PM that are approaching that D, E and F capacity if we don't make any improvements. And so you'll see seventy and fifty and sixty. Uh, this is just the study, wanted to focus on public engagement. Long story short is we had a really good effort, we got over two thousand people engaged. We, we had pop-up events, we had events at the Home and Garden Show, we had a web map, we had opportunities at our Waffle breakfasts and other city events. And so MinDOT was extremely pleased with the number of folks that we have engaged. They were quite honestly surprised at the amount of people that were interested in contributing comments and votes. These priority votes where they had a little tree and what are your concerns, you know, what does this residents consider? And, and it won't surprise you that, you know, thirty-five percent, you know, sixty, eighty percent of them had congestion, lanes, issues at ramps merging on an offense. I mean, that, that would align with what we see and experience on a regular basis. So we developed, we developed four concepts. One is an easy pass lane or a high occupancy lane. We also looked at general purpose lanes, auxiliary lanes, the lanes between the on-ramps and the off-ramps to help you get in and out. And then concept four was a interim look at just doing auxiliary lanes between fifty and sixty. I'll get into a little detail here. That's, that's an example of, of the different corridors. But what I wanted to emphasize is one of the key points that came out of this study and, and one that City Administrator Miller will be able to attest to is there's a lot of focus initially at County Road fifty. And Commissioner Holberg did an outstanding job and, and what we've always indicated is there's a lot of pressure coming from County Road sixty from the west. And MinDOT wasn't necessarily seeing that until we went through the study. And as a result of this, they have agreed that the improvements that we make have to extend down to County Road sixty. We have a lot of pressure coming from the west and using that access area to get onto the freeway. And that was new information to MinDOT, so that was a definite success that came out of this project. However, as you go further south on seventy, we didn't quite see the volumes, the pinch point there is kind of at sixty and fifty. And so they looked at different options here and where we end up is, is kind of a blend of two and three at the end. But just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of an idea on that, where you'll see the auxiliary ramps between the intersections and then there'd be some, oh, sorry, and then general purpose lanes, some sort of addition. A long story short is we need to have additional capacity, there's not existing capacity on the interstate right now. And they summarized that concepts one and two and three, basically where we're adding capacity, we're showing benefit for mobility and liability, addressing some, some safety concerns. The idea of doing another interim improvement like concept four addresses some of those short-term things, but doesn't set us up for long-term success. And so that really, that really kind of fell off the table. We did do some estimates, there was some criteria involved. But what you'll see is, is rather large numbers. And as we go further on here, I'll, I'll highlight some of those costs. But when we kind of took a look at it, we're like I said, focusing kind of a bill two or three, so somewhere around that hundred and fifty million dollar concept, but you know, depending upon what direction we go. The evaluation was not to give a recommendation. MinDOT studies don't necessarily do that, it's really that quarter, it's some evaluation, they weren't doing design, it was really to provide information to the parties. So the next steps was to identify a purpose and need evaluation. That is part of what's called a NIPA process, but that's, that's the next step in delivering a project where you have federal funding. Closing out, finish your costumes, finishing the report and technical reports. They're not quite done with that, if you look at the website, it's still in draft form. I anticipate probably this summer that process will be completed, that was led by a consultant. So it's really fast, but you know, again, I think the highlight was is recognize the need. They expanded their limits down to County Road sixty and they identified that it's not only, it may not be a capacity issue, but the ramps need to be addressed due to the congestion on thirty-five. Then I just, I'm gonna shift focus a little bit, any questions on the corridor study? It's, it's technical in nature, but. So then concurrently, the next step that we're working on is the interchange itself. So step one was to do the corridor study update and now we're looking at the intersection itself. So that's what it looks like today. You've all driven it, but you know, you, the pinch point here where there's only one lane going there, we don't have pedestrian facilities all the way around, we have two-lane bridges. What has come out of that study is those bridges are deficient in capacity and structure, so they need to be replaced. Right now, it's looking like it would be three lanes in each direction, so the bridges would widen to accompany, accommodate those additional lanes as well. And then you can see again these on-ramps and off-ramps, this is a really perfect example, that's, that's a short acceleration ramp with very little area to merge.
Would that allow for widening fifty, because it, it's also a pinch point underneath.
It's a good, yeah, excellent, yes, you are correct and I'll get to that. So where we are at in the process is on February ninth, with the information from MinDOT corridor study at about a ninety-five percent, the county issued a request for proposal for preliminary engineering. We've talked about this quite a bit because the county was awarded over five million dollars in federal money for engineering itself. There's a lot of, a lot of steps to go through if you use that federal money for preliminary engineering. So the goal right now is to use local dollars for the preliminary engineering and then use those federal funds for the final engineering. So this was very strategic in the dates. So right now, we're going to, for preliminary engineering, we sent it to eight different local consultants, many of whom are going to partner up and team to get some innovative and fresh ideas. And then March eighth, those RFPs are due, probably May, a contract will be awarded. The goal is to have a geometric layout by February first of twenty twenty-five. And the reason for that is in the last legislative session, there was a legislation passed called the greenhouse gas emissions. With that is a new law that requires quite a bit of mitigation and significant costs, millions of dollars. To preclude ourselves from having that law take place on this intersection, we have to have a layout done by February first, so we're targeting that. Concurrently, there's, there's several staff, city, city engineers that are working with the author of that bill. There was a little bit of ambiguity in it that we're trying to kind of narrow down. So we actively are meeting with him and his representatives and I would expect maybe some technical correctness or some, some minor revisions to come out of this session to kind of address some of those issues as well. There was a task force that just finished their report that talked about some of the impacts and then how that would apply, be applied to future projects. and then how that would apply, be applied to future projects. And then once we get that geometric layout complete, then we would submit that RFP for final engineering, right away acquisition and construction. Based upon this timeline, we're looking at a twenty twenty-seven start of construction. So twenty twenty-six, we'd have final design and right away. I wanted to give you a little bit of update on funding application. Like we talked about, we did get some money previously, that one point four million. That half of that is going to be applied to this project, so about seven hundred thousand dollars. We also received the five million dollars in congressionally directed spending for engineering. Since then, we've made multiple efforts to get additional dollars in twenty twenty-two. The city and county partnered in the Quarters of Commerce program. We asked for one hundred one million. We are unsuccessful. What I will highlight is, if you're familiar with that process, the statutory law requires geographical equity between metro and outstate. We tied with the highest project that did get it, but it was outstate. So the takeaway from that is this project is kind of next in line. There was a lot of, lot of, a lot of feeling that we're just about there. Was a lot cheaper, yes. Well, five million dollars, I recall.
Five million cheaper, it was only five.
It was only five. We. And, and they did, that was shared with us, that that was a big difference, obviously. We also made an effort to get some federal dollars as front of the IAJA. We requested a hundred and sixteen million dollars. We were unsuccessful in that. I sat through debriefing this afternoon with the DOT on that. And they gave us some real excellent feedback. I would say the overall thought process is, is that we were cautiously optimistic on this. But the, the real reward was getting some feedback as to what could make for a strong application here in the next solicitation, which is expected here in August. And, and really it was kind of a project readiness. We didn't have the benefit of layouts and design and right away and needs, and we knew that. And we did our best put in that, in that conceptually. But the feedback that we got is to score higher, you need that. So I would expect that as we move forward here this summer and fall, they're working through the notice of funding up to needing that we would try that again.
Second, we do those applications to like, do we get letters from our congressional and senate? So we get that?
We do. We have had excellent contributions from our, from our membership, yep, and our elected officials.
Sam, give another question. So you come back and you ask, or later, we're a little bit smarter, we have a little more stuff. So the same amount of money or?
I would expect it to be a different amount of money. We, since that's middle, and I'm going to share with you a slide here shortly that shows how we've kind of revamped our layout. So in two thousand and four, we did an official map, which kind of was the basis for acquiring the Burger King and then also the gas station, also for realigning one seventy-second opposite home furniture. Since then, we've gotten a little smarter, we've gotten some better innovation, and we've kind of revised that layout. So I would expect that amount to change. We currently have two open federal attempts. We have, one is the regional solicitation that goes through the Met Council. We're asking for ten million dollars. And I'll show you here shortly why you'll see these dollar amounts. And then we also are going back to the IAJA for the raised grant, and we're asking for twenty-five million dollars on that. To the mayor's point, we are working with our elected officials. And just this morning, I was notified, I got a draft copy of the bill. Two bills actually from the reviser. One is going to be a request for twenty-five million dollars. That is specific to the cost of the interchange, so that twenty-five million dollars should be allocated to the state. The second solic, the second request is eight million dollars. And that mayor would go towards County Road Fifty, Janelle Path, all of those local roads, Clamath Trail that are off the interstate system. So that eight million dollars would go to the locals to address those needs. I go back to this. So with that, this is our most current layout that we're kind of. Sorry. But you'll see here, for an example, the longer ramp here, you'll see all these kind of tie in. So it's not dramatic. You'll see here that we have incorporated the multimodal facilities that wasn't necessarily included. To the mayor's point, you'll see how County Road Fifty is widened from one lane to three or four in there with emergency shoulder to address kind of those capacities going underneath the freeway as well. This would include replacement of the bridges, one here, and then also the portion that crosses the railroad to the south. Has some different ramps as well. One of the things in the RFP is we are asking for some innovation. They don't need to have this exact interchange design. There's multiple, there's clover leaves, there's diverted diamonds. So there's, there's technical ways of bringing traffic in and out. We have, we have asked in that RFP to take a look at that and see if there's some ways that would be more efficient and within kind of that framework of the right away. Lastly, we are working again with our elected officials. The county has prepared a one page report, front and back, that talks about the cost. And right now, we're looking at a phase one, which would be the replacement of the bridge and then the local roads supporting that, and then the auxiliary lanes immediately thereafter. So we've been pretty clear that we're not looking to do improvements on MINDOT's right away. That is something that they would have to do. Right now, they have a pavement preservation plan for twenty twenty-nine to address some deficient pavement. At that time, we would also look for them to put some money in the table and then address those auxiliary lanes from fifty to forty-six, and then from fifty to sixty. So that forty million, if I remember right, it's about twenty-two million or so for the bridge and about eighteen million for the local roads, like fifty and Clameth and one seventy. So that's where we are at today. We are going to be developing our draft CIP. The county has advanced their CIP processes here. So whereas it used to be in December, it's advancing about three months in, in advance of that. So for our schedule, you'll be seeing some information a little bit sooner than, than normal. But we are working closely with them. We have met with them already this year to talk about our draft CIP. The big takeaway is this would probably be programmed in twenty twenty-seven versus right now, it's in twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Do any of these funds expire? So you apply or bring to them? Does that create a timeline that we have to be aware of?
There is a sunset date with them. It's, it's quite a bit. It's like, there isn't anything that we're remotely close. I think some of them are like twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one. So we're still well within that area. We basically have to demonstrate a commitment to advance the project. You don't necessarily have to expend it per se, but we have to just make sure that we're going through the process. They don't want to just send money and then have it all away. So, but yes, there is, but we're well, well within those timeframes.
It's more of a construction question. Will the both north and south bridges, thirty-five bridges be closed at the same time?
It is a construction question. We haven't gotten to that level of detail, obviously. My experience is if we look at the thirteen bridge that was done with Burnsville, you know, there was always an attempt to keep traffic open at some point. So I would suspect that there would be some effort to keep some traffic moving. For sure, I, I, I don't think it would be the four lanes that we have today. Might go down to two, might be some fairways. It would, you know, it's, it would be hard to close this. I mean, you're talking about one sixty meter. There isn't. And so to lessen the pain, we'd have to key. I think there'd be a lot of creative, I think there'd be some night work. You know, one of the things that we've talked about in developing the CIPs, at least for our local folks, is to make sure our north, south, and east west roads aren't impacted by our local construction. So we're talking with our neighbors on judicial, things like that, to make sure that we're not adding to some of the inconvenience there. But that's one of the details that will work out for sure.
People probably are going to have to stay private.
Notice that the total cost, those are all future costs, right?
Correct.
Not accounting for what the city has already put invested in.
Correct. We, however, we do have that. You are correct in that we do have that in our CIP though. So the funds that we have expended today were actually, so those are actually funds from the Met Council as far as the right away acquisition for the Burger King and the gas stations, about two million dollars. It's an interest free loan through the Met Council. So we do have that factored in. Basically, once we go into right away an acquisition, we have to pay that back. But we have shown our city and county costs here in the CIP.
Other questions? So they have, Dakota County has these drafted up, they'll have them, the requests and everything, so we don't.
Correct. And once I get that information, I'll send that to, to Mr. Miller. But we, we're just still getting, we have, they haven't even assigned a, a house file number to it yet. It was just literally fresh this morning. So those were drafted by Representative Costinck.
Is it, so are there Senate companions yet?
Not yet. I will, I'll provide Mr. Miller the copy, as they're all available. There's a, there's a one pager, there's some other links, and then also that, that layout might be helpful too. So, yes. It's an exciting project that takes some time, but there's, there's a lot of interest and momentum. And if we can get success on some of those funding, that would help a lot.
One of those career projects?
It could be. The interim improvements felt that way too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's move on to franchise the discussion. That's.
According to well, with residents.
It's my first time using Story Maps, so I'm getting used to it. All right, so under Minnesota statute two sixteen B point thirty-six, cities can impose fees on utility companies that use the public rights away to deliver their service. There are different structures of how to set up the franchise fees. But for the purposes of this presentation, I'm going to talk about a flat rate approach. Probably the second most common is a percentage, but we'll get into that here in a bit. I'll just note that the city does have franchise agreements with all four utility providers in Lakeville. I'll zoom in on this map in a second, but Center Point, Minnesota Energy, Excel, and Dakota Electric. This just shows their service areas.
That makes sense, right?
Each service provider has kind of a way that they structure their fees. So in the first column here, the electric companies typically structure their fees in four categories, residential, and then they break down their commercial and industrial into three different categories. And that's mainly dependent on usage. Same with gas, they'll have the residential category and then they have five categories where they break down the commercial and industrial based on usage. The reason I bring this part up is because the next chart, you'll see how other cities have broken down their fees. And one thing that a lot of other cities have done is instead of saying we're going to impose a, a certain fee on electric and a certain fee on gas, they break it down into these categories. So it, it's more equitable. So residential versus consumer is not paying the same as a, a large commercial or industrial customer.
According to our institutions exempt, so churches and schools, so that.
This, this is a tool to capture all customers, ones that are typically exempt. So kind of looking at this chart, you'll see how our market comparable cities have broken down their franchise fees. There are only a handful of metro cities that don't impose franchise fees. Two that are included in this chart that have been identified as our comparable cities are Blaine and Maple Grove. And there are also a couple that do the percentage fee structure. But for the most part, you'll see the, the different fees that these cities impose and then all of the averages down the bottom.
Any reason why? Oh. And this is kind of really specific question, but why Alamo Valley is the only one that doesn't have gas, but they do electric?
When kind of reaching out to some of these cities, they're talking about it right now. I don't know why when they implemented what they have currently, they didn't do both, but they are talking about it.
My guess it might have been their franchise was up. They use that as the example as a time to.
True.
All right, then here you'll see the city's current commercial and residential accounts. There are currently four hundred and forty-three commercial accounts and a little over two, twenty-three thousand residential accounts. This chart here shows if these were to be assessed at different levels, what total revenue could be potentially expected. So the main differences here, the first line, two dollars for residential electric, I'm sorry, electric for gas, or six and twelve, and then the other amounts increase as well. So you can kind of see what a potential annual revenue could be from these different fee structures. Yes, monthly, yep. So you'd see it twice. You would see a two dollar charge if that were the charge on your gas bill and then also a two on your electric, so it'd be four dollars.
I'm sorry, it probably depends also on like meters, right? So if there's a strip mall, there's only one meter, that's just one charge, even though there might be ten businesses.
Correct.
Percentage? This is a flat fee.
This is a flat rate, yes.
So we need to save that. This is just, sorry.
It, it's a flat rate, but how the utility companies break down how they charge a customer, you might fall into, you wouldn't, but a commercial or industrial user might fall into a, a higher category based on their usage. So in general, it's not based on usage, you know, residential, you're only paying that one rate. But to make it more equitable across all of the commercial industrial users, they have different categories that folks would fall into.
But that's not something that the city would set, that's something that the company would set.
Correct.
To help determine how they're paying for franchise fees, I suppose.
Exactly. Well, they also use it for their own usage to, for their own fee structure.
We set the rate. So let's say we wanted to charge a four percent fee on commercial. That it's four percent based on what the bill is. But you could do a four percent on a commercial A or a six percent on C. You, you, it's a la carte. Oh yeah, we, we want to set it up. We just did this to show just an example of the scale.
Major, according to you mentioned, majority of cities are doing a flat fee though.
Correct, yeah. In, in our comparable cities, I think there were only two or three that did the percentage structure. But Finance Director Stahl can speak to it too. I think that leaves a little bit more unpredictable, especially with budgeting and also for the, the consumers, a little bit more unpredictable whether their usage is higher or lower in winter, summer, you know, whatever months.
I would say a flat fee would be a little more transparent for customers.
Absolutely.
And it is the concept, like a city that does one of these fees, charges the utility and then the utility passes that on to their customers, however they see fit to be able to equitably collect what the city is.
Yeah, well, so the utility company, it shows up on their monthly bill. And then when the customer pays the utility company that amount, the company then remits that payment to the city on a quarterly basis. Does that answer your question?
The city sets the amount.
Yeah, okay.
It's not up to the utility company, how, how do, they just collect.
They just, that's what I, that was my question asked. Yep, that was my question, that's a pass.
Yes.
That's a good one.
So moving on to some kind of large, larger financial targets that the city has. Finance Director Stahl has broken down some of these payment management, public safety, fire station remodels, and how much, what the. and how much, what the annual levy is required for each fiscal year, and how franchise fees could help offset one or more of those.
Like a policy question. So if you you set it up, we're going to have franchise fees, but then sunset it at 10. Look at it. So it's like, okay, we know we want to pay for fire stations. We know this is what the target is going to be. And the future council has to decide like, oh, we have $39 million more projects that need to be worked on. You know, it would be the more appropriate approach in the first place. Yeah, because I don't think the sense is to like just grow government for the sake of government, but we have specific things.
I've gotten to it yet, maybe I did, but most cities use their franchise fees for pavement management because it is an ongoing fee or an ongoing cost to the city. Some others use it for environmental and sustainability. But there's really a wide variety. The most common that I was able to come across was pavement management. And Mr. Ome can speak to that too, from some of his experience and working in other cities too.
And most of that's due to the fact that it's in the chase of the streets.
Are these financial targets inclusive of or just the mill and overlay projects or the full recon?
No, these are pavement management that's shown here is for more of the the crack sealing, the patching, small mill and overlay projects, those type of things. Striping, annual striping projects that we have, caving in or sidewalk repair, ADA, stuff like, stuff like that. The more miscellaneous type projects, we still the overall, the street reconstruction projects, those are still paid out of a different mechanism. So a street recon is not, it's not on this list.
What are the different asterisks? Some have three, some have four.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
What?
At the bottom, at least in the packet, one star is the current funding source operating, like two stars is the current funding source bonding or additional. The three stars is
This next chart here will show sort of the construction timeline, at least for the public safety training facility, fire station remodels and builds. So kind of the question is, if the council were to go down this route of franchise fees, what would kind of be the target? And like the mayor mentioned, if there's one target and then we pivot to another one, maybe what that would look like. Any questions on any of the financial targets or any of the numbers so far?
Just so I get it straight in my mind, Courtney. So the so the previous chart that you showed for the public safety and the fire station, that's if it was bonded and that was to pay the debt on it?
Yes. It's the amount of levy to cover the debt.
Okay.
All right. So if the council wishes to move forward with franchise fees, staff would begin preliminary communications with the four utility providers in implementing the new franchise fees. Like I mentioned, there are agreements with all four, so that that step is done. The city would then adopt an ordinance with each of their service providers to enact the fee. And then the city would be required to know by the PUC and then allow time for all the utility companies to implement the fees into their billing processes.
So this isn't something to like wait for a franchise?
I think if I remember right, it could be after it was approved by council. It could happen as fast as 90 days, kind of give or take some time. But, you know, working with the PUC and allowing the utility companies to implement the fee structure would take a little bit of time.
Questions or comments from council?
So I just want to get straight my header verified. So when you implement a franchise fee, that applies to every like structure, whether it's residential, commercial. So some of the places that like a, take a school for existence, a church, that isn't necessarily paying taxes on land that feed and stone.
Yes.
It includes government buildings too. So like.
Their themselves. Yep.
Exactly. Schools.
Schools.
Future rate recycling centers.
So I mean, my thoughts, I mean, my thoughts are clearly we have some long-term financial liability. We're getting to a point where we're starting to think about being fully developed. So having permit fee and all that type of other revenues start to start dwindling over the next several years. And so how do we meet that kind of financial demand by without putting all property tax? And, you know, my perspective on it is, I think if we do have very specific things, which we do, public safety training, fire station changes, pavement management, then three that are costly to all things that we've kind of agreed to as a council, the direction we go. The cell system get there. So I'm supportive of the idea. It's just what is the right level and for what length? And to me, 10 years makes sense. I don't know why I say that, but it's 10 years to run number.
These need 10 year, no, these are 20 year bonds. Yes. Well, probably. I mean, it depends, but most likely they're pretty extensive projects. You know, one way to look at it is, let's just say you were to try to fund all of the pavement management here. Think of it as you're taking $2 million off the levy that then you can use that same amount of that levy for those, toward those two next items, if you wanted to think about it that way.
And I think part of it too is like there are certainly non-profit entities in the city that use resources and it's a being able to capture some of that financial support just for, if you think of, we're not like a city like St. Paul, third of the land is all governed. But we certainly have those who use services. So to me, it's figuring out the right amount. I think it's not out of the realm to be into that, between the four and $6, maybe $5 in between on the residential. So finding that happy medium between that 2.2 to 3.9 annual. Really shocking, actually. It's almost double when you go from $4 to $6 on residential.
Okay. So let's just pick the number five because I can take that times 12 easily.
Yeah. $60.
All right. So $60 a year for a residential. Are their taxes going to go down $60? The property tax is going to go down to $60 so that this is a wash?
No.
That the fee in the, that they're getting on their gas and electric is offset by the property taxes that we would not charge them?
No, but there's a decent chance that it would be less than if we had to levy at all because it's more payers.
Say that again?
So it's, it would in theory be lower than if we had to put all of it on property tax levy because there's more payers versus. So like right now, I guess if you have, let's say you have a multifamily building, right? They pay one property tax. If you have 10 meters on that, those are they're all paying a franchise. So they're, so you're widening the pie, who's paying? And if we've already committed to fire station, public safety training, pavement management, you know, there are funding mechanisms. The levy.
What I'm trying to figure out is the cost to the taxpayer, the residential taxpayers. Is it cheaper for them to have it levying on their property taxes or is it cheaper for them to have the fees?
I'd say fees because there's more, more people paying.
And you have people paying in so that aren't paying property taxes.
So, because I'm looking for the talking point that is it going to be necessary when they start getting their bills and contacting us to say, what is this fee for? And how is, what's the benefit to me?
Yeah, there's definitely more, there's more people paying in under franchise fee model than tax model. So you, me, any of all of us that are private taxpayers, you would pay less into a fire station on a franchise fee model than you would if we were putting it on your property taxes.
There's more people.
Because there's more people paying.
You know, if you have a $100 bill, you have five people paying into it. It's going to be cheaper than four people paying.
The thing like for me, when I initially looked at this, I had a lot of the same questions. People are going to ask, well, I'm paying this, what does it do to this? But what I see is what we're looking at now, especially the public safety training facility, the fires, those are public in the fire stations. Those are things that apply to the entire public that if we went just levying to fund them, there are people that are sometimes high-end users that, you know, there isn't money going into that. So I see it as an opportunity to spread those payments out and to have more people, you know, basically using these services and paying for them. And yeah, while it isn't commensurate, like you're going to pay $5 more, $60 a year more, your taxes will go down 60. In the long run, it does help. Plane, it will help, it will help the levy. I just don't know how much.
Could this be a strategy for working with other cities adjacent, might use a public facility to say, since they are all using this franchise fee structure, to ask them to, you know, if you want to stake in this for some of the bond or increase with franchise fee, you know, fifty cents, you know, something like that. As a potential way for them to buy in a little bit. Well, I think some of the conversation we have other cities is more on the ongoing yearly expenditures and less on the capital because we know that it's 800, so 1000 run in and that membership fee, which is why we're pursuing more state funding, we're going back again because we don't think we should be like, once paid with the capital, but long-term, there's going to be a lot of users. But I mean, it's up to them to decide, you know, how they want to do that. And it's their liquor fund or it's their franchise fee fund.
I think it would come down to timing too, if they already have their franchise fees earmarked to pavement management or something. I don't know when those expire in their ordinance, but like kind of like you look at timing situation too.
Don't get me wrong. I want more figures in the pot on training facility. We don't necessarily have to go into this, but through you in terms of moving forward in this process to figure out what is the appropriate amount. Because I'm thinking about what we should be using these towards. I don't know that the regional public safety facility fits into the rationale of where franchise fees, Lakeville residents should be applied to. I think that's fair. And I think my sense on that would be if we ended up getting more bonding money this year, it wouldn't be. But the other, the other part of that is if we go through the traditional bonding model this year, instead of cash what we got last year, we have to come up with match, you know, a host. So at a minimum, coming up with host portion. Where we're asking for 17, 18 million, whatever, 16. So 16, we'd have to ask, we'd have to come up with eight.
Just a reminder, we already do have franchise fees on cable bills. That's been in place for a long time.
We have so many fees.
Those are counter amazing. You all know, people continue to move, but now I think all streaming is going back to cable. So other thoughts on, it sounds like we think it's a good idea. Turbin dollars is kind of where we need to figure out. I mean, if I look at what's the total? What was the total if we did the, the new fire station? Because we were going to kind of reevaluate that.
Well, you're looking at 2.3 to three, you're looking between two to four million in debt service if you're at all the fire stations.
Oh.
Yeah. Which, I mean, just if you want to go to the high end, you'd, that'd be a $6 electric and $6 gas per month on residential side.
So why do, why do we? So for instance, on the why does the industrial get capped out on some of these models? So why do we, we basically there's no change in reinforced 120. So is that because it's a max?
No, it's not a max. Those were numbers I just plugged in. I tried to model them after some of the other cities. But those can be changed in any way.
And if you did it percentage, you're going to have some of those that are much higher.
Right. To me, if I, if I look at it, I think just from a fire station, the $6 residential started. Again, the last time we had a conversation when we're all committed to building, that was two new fire stations.
And we, you know, we'd hope to have that discussion tonight.
Yeah. That's fine.
But that's on the docket for next month to come with the next iteration.
I don't think we'll really know until we get good data, what the new 185th meeting session.
Has this gone to the finance committee at all or just their input?
You, the two of you here are either staff or from the committee, we have a we're not speaking about the committee, but if you want to speak about it.
Yeah, no, I can. I'm very thick chair of the finance committee. We have, have a meeting that's coming actually. So it's on our docket for tomorrow night to talk about it. So, because it came up at your work session. And so we have not had a meeting since then. So this will be our first one. So it's on there to talk about definitely.
That's why I'm just, I would like some other input.
So let's say knowing that, you guys feel comfortable, say, okay, we, council like to direct finance committee to come up with recommendation based on you know, what's kind of in this schematic? Does that make sense? And obviously we could deviate, but.
I don't know about a recommendation. It's just, just more their input as to.
Yeah. I mean, it's not going to carry the way law. Okay.
Scenarios.
Feedback.
Offer feedback, questions that we should pose to ponder if we need to further? No.
Are you looking for general direction for a number to be looking at?
Either a number or a goal. Do you want to do pavement management? You want to do the first center, the fire station, fire stations?
I mean, to me, the financial goal that makes the most sense to be looking towards is the pavement management, fire station remodels. How much of that we can actually do at four, four and a half million each year? I don't know. But those would be the targets that I think make most sense to you in the franchise fee.
So it, I guess.
And I'm sure there are a lot, a number of accounts for commercials, small, which I'm not sure that could really skeeve it.
Well, no, and again, I said 2.3 million is probably, well, I guess that's probably more accurate. So 3.7. undecided.
The fire station? Yeah. I mean, that's best estimate of what we know of the cost. Yeah, I mean, that's best estimate of what we know of the cost. And the fire, the public safety training facility, the first center, that's assuming we don't get any more money from. And we have put out feeler in a request for other communities to be capital contributors or some other models, um we're still.
So. Maybe I'm not thinking correctly, but the stills doesn't solve the problem of going further in debt. I mean, it it's just a way to pay for the debt. So I guess my other question to the finance, people would be going further in debt for these. When we're always concerned about keeping that Moody's rating at a certain level. And so that does finance fees. This is a question not to be answered right now, do franchise fees then look positive to Moody's when they are um looking at our ratings since we went further in debt?
Oh, to pray the experts, I would think if we had a dedicated source and that would look positively, I should mention. You could structure it, because the two. That's not good, so you could, you're you wouldn't be issuing debt for that, this would just be money.
The pavement management? Oh, I thought we issued debt for the.
This is not your reconstructs, this is just your day, your yearly maintenance.
Okay, so that's just in the regular budget for the yearly maintenance, okay.
Yeah, very. Thank you, uh again, I think that Michelle, you identified something that we have definitely talked about on the committee. With regard to how the debt level of the city interacts with the credit rating and how do we maintain the interest rate credit rating, so. That has been on our radar for a while, and we're gonna have more discussions about that. Part of that was the result of where we came up with the. The kind of the debt dashboard we've got put together, we're gonna be providing you, and so it'll all fit together, and this is a component piece of that to. Help with that discussion, so what we'd like to do is have a couple of months to kind of look at this and then come back and present to this group or to the council. Our thoughts and observations, uh we'll see to give you the information you need to make an informed decision on. What the best option for Lakeville is.
Sounds like the council is okay going in the direction, franchise is just figuring along. Yes.
And just. I've gone to, Paul's done this and some other cities I've done before too. This is not a one-month discussion with Excel and DEA and those groups, um so why?
Yeah.
I understand, I understand why the finance committee wants a couple of months, they'll need to start working faster than that, if there's a place.
Yes, I let me just say, I would like to, because I think we're. Okay, going in the franchise fee direction, but understanding what that is, I think having a conversation with the utilities to get the ball rolling. We get it, we're okay doing.
We can start the bones and the ordinance.
Yes, yep, yep. Uh okay, I just for future discussion. I think I had um. Just, if you've been following this new piece of legislation related to housing that is huge and all encompassing and. Have unbelievable ramifications for our city and how we grow. I I don't know, it basically ties our hands, but I would like to have a set conversations that does pass what we can do to continue to. You know. Grow the way we want to, um I don't know if that's even possible, but certainly. Asking staff to get creative on how we can react. And uh I I don't think we'll be alone, that there's other cities that have. So what that means from a legal standpoint, or just coming up with. Put it out there, if you haven't, if you missed the news last week, it's basically takes our entire power away from any type of land. Um convenience administrative updates. Yeah, Michelle?
Um it's just a little update on the arenas, um. We, they are. Looking to, they've drafted a a document um to get an extended warranty on the outdoor rink, so we. They'll be working with the contractor on that. And then they're also um gonna be sending out an RFP for naming rights on the outdoor rink. Other than that. He's doing really, really well in uh. Concessions of selling ice, and you know, just very devoted to making sure that it's a very profitable endeavor for all of us, so.
Now, I'd be curious if you had a conversation about, did we sell more indoor ice because there was no outdoor ice, or just was.
No, it 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 just doing better in general.
You know, break time.
And for guys.
No, yeah, no, we're prepared, right? Yeah.
Sound like indoor time.
Right, no, I mean, we'll see everything go up when the outdoor rink is in place too, because. He's putting programs, um like, for instance, just something simple as like a a mites tournament. I mean, he, so he's coming up with creative ways to get that ice being used. And um he has multiple ideas that could be used in the future to be able to. Uh utilize the ice at its maximum.
Uh public safety committee, I won't go into most of our specifics of these updates, but uh you had a good opportunity to talk through. Recruitment and what that's looking like recently, uh continue to get stellar candidates. Applicant polls, um but it is a big hiring for police and fire, um with multiple positions open. Uh you've talked about some uh equipment needs, upcoming. For example, the police vehicles are finally done most of what we've ordered, but there's still a backlog of squads uh coming forward. Let's talk about an upcoming fire engine, uh which we may need to replace, but depending on how. Fire station consolidation might work in the future, we may not like to do one of those firing. Police department's new recruitment video flyer looks really snazzy, um so. Impressed by our communication department working with the police department to to attract new candidates, so.
Uh have you guys had conversations with the fire department about? Now, if they're kind of really moving this more. Duty crew and kind of sign for shifts, expanding the radius of uh fire stations who they recruit as I had.
I asked that question uh last week.
Oh.
And the answer was not yet.
Okay.
Part of my question was also about changing it so that it was a timed response opposed to a mild radius, but. That's, it's not a legal way to, I don't know if it's legal, that's a term for it, but.
Yeah, it's not the distance, the distance of the. Oxy, or how long it takes them to get to the station, and so they do the map around the station, they can extend it, but then it just extends them out to them and gets to the station and doesn't do anything.
So there'll still be pages uh for the foreseeable future, and so uh I think our chief feels strongly that. Keeping that radius as is for now is important to make sure that we meet our targets for the time response to a call.
Okay.
Had that Dakota nine eleven meeting, board meeting, um business was pretty routine, a few items of interest. Citizen web reporting, uh they possibly come the second half of this year.
What does that mean?
It means a citizen would be able to uh report something to nine one one that's routine and uh using the internet. So not necessarily using phone call, so you could go to web reporting and it would go in and then it would be triaged. You know, a lot of departments are using that.
Was your meeting before or after um uh the lack of service for?
It was, it was after, that was.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so then uh the director talked about the nine one one outage, they're still investigating that. I mean, it was a weather-related outage due to tornadoes in the Madison.
So that's why it affected Iowa and Illinois at the same time, doesn't that cover that?
I, I.
The interesting part was on social media, my husband got texts from people in Illinois and Iowa that theirs went out at the same time.
Yeah, so what I don't, maybe maybe you can um. I mean, maybe you did, maybe you know this answer, what what's our redundancy other than going to Ramsey County, that we don't have a secondary fiber?
Well, that's.
It's like, here's my thing, it's like, I'm thinking back of. When I was on on D B B, like the whole point was to have redundancies in fiber, and like, whoa.
There is a redundancy of the fiber, redundancy didn't connect. So then after the redundant, after that didn't work, then the backup is to go. Start taking the calls, and to go to Ramsey County is not like, oh, we'll just call them up and all of a sudden, there's a process. One of the things that I brought up was, you know, how often do we test, like, the redundancy? And I mean, like physically, not just, oh, the computer says it should work, but physically test it. How often do we physically test on backing up with Ramsey County, because that took quite some time. Uh to get the backup Ramsey County, but yes, there is a backup pathway, and it just the transfer to the backup pathway. Something happened, um that's still being looked at, I mean, there's no concrete answers yet. And this is being looked at by all levels of the state, um Department of Public Safety and federal people and and.
Well, I just found it also interesting that. Dakota County, one of the largest counties gets hit, but the other five, the other four were very small counties. And I just couldn't figure out how we ended up in that sweep, do you know what I'm trying to say, because they were down.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just who your provider is, who's on that line.
So I was. I was at Walz, we're trying to buy a car, and they have the same material, I guess, sell cars for three year.
Yeah. Then the third thing is, uh just the fixed cost discussion continues, um the county pays fixed costs and what their percentages and everything, there's a word. That's gonna be, should I continue that discussion? So those are the highlights.
Is the county backing off on wanting to?
No, it's just.
Move forward up to the fifty percent? Uh they are, aren't they?
I'm on.
I'm on a group. All right.
So that's all for that?
We know if there was.
I I was almost scared to ask that question.
I, there was no report on anything like that. You know, it's, I I can't. I think if there would have been something hypercritical, we. But definitely some work to do to just show.
I don't know why the whole weather thing just seems like a story to me versus, you know, it's kind of like those weather balloons falling across the. The sky, and we got all kinds of stories for those, so I I would like a real answer someday. I I. To explain this, because it's just, it's really odd, and this isn't. This isn't the first situation in the United States to have something like this happen, and so. And there need, there's a reasons that some of this is happening, we need the real answers.
Any other updates? Not, I will take, oh, let me just say this. Public record, our next meeting is next Monday at six o'clock, six thirty, six AM is the new time, that'll take a motion to adjourn. Take a second, okay, I'll just favor say hi.
Hi.